Left home and her month working on.
Jesus.
Okay. Why?
I'm just.
It's a cemetery. Certified. For like a board.
Do it for Billy or don't work on it?
You want to find this? Yeah. You want to find this?
You just twist it and that that wall goes to set. You take a piece of wood and you mark it.
And then a little pretty burn?
Lost by my incident. Yeah, he should. Like crack cocaine.
He might be on the phone. Oh, that's okay.
He's worth it.
He's back.
Fighting with it.
Yeah.
Should've got, I'm gonna go ahead and start tonight's meeting, we're just a few minutes late tonight. Um, gonna call the meeting to order, can we get roll call Tara?
Brent Sattler.
Here.
Jerry Fawcett.
Yes.
Walt Bennett.
Here.
Mindy Jo.
Yes.
Craig Getzensky.
Here.
Let's um stand for a quick pledge of allegiance and a prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dear Reverend Lefathers, we come this evening at our council meeting, we just ask that you guide and direct us and help us make the best decisions for the town of Kirkland, and we ask all these things in your name, amen.
Amen.
Our first um, our first business tonight is a public hearing for our 2026 budget. And Tara has our um, our budget up here, if anybody would like to look at it. If you have any questions or comments, I'll leave it open for just a minute or so to see if anybody has any questions. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearings with no comments or questions at this time. Um, we're gonna move on to our um minutes. Um, our last minutes were held on August the 11th and August the 26th. Would anybody entertain a motion to approve these unless you have any questions or comments on them?
I made a motion. I'm sorry, I got that.
So we have a motion by Brent and a second by Craig. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Craig had a second?
Yeah, Craig second, first before Walt.
Yep.
Hey Brendan.
Yeah.
Can you go first?
So activity for since our last board meeting, as Paul, we got thirty-two calls per service. Out of that, we had three, three adult arrests. A lot of those were gone after I asked you about the misdemeanors. Had nineteen traffic stops for the last month. Full load citations, eighteen warnings. And then we've also had Paul and his, well, his issue for the last month. My minor maintenance issue, we have vehicles, we have a spotlight on the pickup truck, it's cracked. Early stages of that was brought to my attention within the last week, so I haven't got any prices or anything on that. So I think just the, I would say casing could be maybe replaced on it. But obviously with moisture getting in there, it's not gonna be good and freezes at all, so. That's no issue with the trucks. Stacking's still okay. And I did stiff training last week and add it to my hours in the street training. Just a wide variety of issues in Indianapolis that are fall long, so. I actually went with my other job, Kirkland Payable, plus the street training. So we're all up on our training hour, myself included, so. And that's all I had.
Okay. Brendan, or not Brendan, sorry, Billy, we're ready for you.
Okay. You have my updates. Give me a few moments to go over them, if you have any questions. And then I've got some bids to go over. Alright, the, the third bid that I have is for cleaning the exterior of the water tower. In the last inspection, there were a few things that uh needed to be done, uh and this was the, uh, the one that was the most standoutish. I have three bids. The first bid is from Tank Maintenance Solutions. And their bid is twenty-two thousand eight hundred. National Wash Authority. Their bid is eight thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. And this is the company that did the refurbishing in twenty-eighteen on the tank itself. And then I've got Complete Restoration, who is the one that did the inspection. Their quote is fourteen thousand two hundred and fifty.
And these were all the same?
Yes.
All the same?
All, all the same specs, all the same thing, just the exterior washed with a biodegradable, soaked with mold and mildew inhibitors.
How much was the National Wash Authority, was that?
National Wash Authority was eight thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. They are the company that actually did the refurbishing in and out of the water tower in twenty-eighteen.
Well, I make a motion that we um accept um National Wash Authority in the amount of eight thousand one hundred and fifty dollars.
I second that.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion by Melinda and a second by Craig. All those in favor, raise your right hand, motion carries.
Alright, now, the next bid, do I need to just wait till the part comes up, or can I go ahead and take that now?
I mean, I just wouldn't go ahead and wait.
Okay, alright.
Because that'll take a while.
Alright, yeah, alright, well, I am, that's all I have at the moment.
Um, can we just ask some, I have some questions on, on the stormwater.
Okay.
Um, I saw on your notes, um, because I was talking to Dan before you came in, um. You said the county's done some drain line work around Capstone and Sunshine Manor?
Yeah, uh, I was, one, it was one day last week, I ran into Brian Poole and uh, one of his sons, and they were doing some work for the county. They were uh, uh, doing push cameras through the storm drains in that area.
Okay.
It's my understanding though, that they were so deep, I don't know that they were able to.
Well, they were at the Sunshine Manor.
Okay.
Apparently the one on thirty-eighth was too deep for them to, to get to.
And we, you just don't know the status of those right now?
I don't know what it says.
Okay, and what they found, or, okay.
No, Dan has not told me anything uh about what they found.
Okay.
So the one on thirty-eighth, the one that goes through Drew's front yard, is that the one?
That's the one they say was, was too deep for them to get to. And it was somewhere, I think he said somewhere between ten, twelve foot deep.
Oh wow, that's pretty deep. I mean, I was just, just curious because we were trying to see where we were at, to see like, like for future, like if we could figure out some projects or like, you don't know anything yet, we don't know what's going on basically with the county and all that, okay?
And it could be a county issue.
Yeah, that's what you're thinking, it could be a county issue.
Yeah, I mean, they, they took responsibility of, of putting a camera through it. So uh, there is a county tile that runs through that parking lot.
Okay.
But nobody knows for sure.
Okay. So you can just keep us updated on that then?
And who was it that I told you told me that in the past, there's been an issue by that, by, right there by Sunshine Manor?
Uh, Jeff Dennis.
Right, so Jeff Dennis, he's the one that put Capstone in. Um, and so he knows a lot about all that back there. And, but you're right, it was how he was telling me that in the past, the county has said that there was a storm rain back there that causes issues, so.
Supposedly there's field tile there, but the county can't tell you exactly where it's at because we had a big discussion about that field tile.
Okay.
Okay. It wouldn't surprise me if there was something with the counties that's causing problems.
Okay.
Maybe not.
Okay.
Um.
I'm interested to see what they found.
Right, me too.
Cameras, so. Okay, I just wanted to update Dan on that, we were talking about earlier, so. Does anybody else have any other questions for Billy, like in his notes or anything?
I do know that we should hear for the next meeting if we get the stormwater planning grant.
Okay.
Because I think by the end of September, she's hoping that she'll, Amy will know.
Okay.
The state did get that.
Yeah, the state got their structure fixed. Homes are still there.
It looked like it was, but.
Yeah.
But that is for a stormwater planning grant, correct? That's what that's for, okay? Alright.
And, and we have, we'll have the match for that.
Okay. Just making myself a note again. Okay, Tara, we're ready for you then.
You guys have the revenue report, you've got your preparation reports. Here are your relic adjustments from last month. And your allowance of accounts payable vouchers for payroll. And then here are your regular, much bigger APV vouchers. And of course, Mindy has already looked at the bank statements, reconciled and signed them.
Anything else Tara?
Not until the end. So you down at the bottom.
Then you're done. We are going to start with new business tonight, and our, our first item on our new business is ordinance twenty, twenty-five dash one dash, or nine dash one, and ordinance enacting and adopting a supplement to the code of ordinances.
Each time that we update the code, you know those papers that I gave you guys to take and replace in your ordinance books? Each, each time we do that, we just have to update the ordinance.
I make a motion to read ordinance twenty twenty-five dash nine dash one by title only.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, raise your right hand, motion carries. I make a motion to pass ordinance twenty twenty-five dash nine dash one. And ordinance enacting and adopting a supplement to the code of ordinances for the town of Kirkland, Indiana, in declaring an emergency. On first reading.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second, did somebody second, I'm sorry, did somebody second?
Brendan.
Brendan, okay. All those in favor, raise your right hand, this motion carries. I make a motion to suspend the rules to pass ordinance twenty twenty-five dash nine dash one. At this, at this meeting.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, raise your right hand, motion carries. And I make a final motion on ordinance twenty twenty-five dash nine dash one on a second reading.
Second.
On a, on a second reading, oh, you seconded, Walt did, okay.
I got them first.
Oh, that's fine, okay. All, all those in favor, raise your right hand, motion carries. Our next item is a um resolution twenty twenty-five dash nine dash two. And it's a resolution renewing the Title VI Implement, Implementation Plan.
In order for you guys to receive, over the town, to receive CCMG funds every year, NDOT requires this. Um, and you guys renew this every year. I didn't make you a copy of the entire thing, but it's in my office if you want to see it. Um, basically saying we're not, I mean, there's a lot that is said, but it's basically saying that we're not going to discriminate on race or religion. Um, there's more to it than that, but, you know, like those papers that I have to lay on the table, that's part of it. Um, you'll see those in the back of the implementation plan. So if somebody came in here and they didn't speak English, we have to accommodate somehow. So that's all this is, is something that you guys renew every single year. There has to be, it has to be a coordinator, and so it's the third treasurer, and that's all you guys are signing, is just re- renewing this. And then I send it to NDOT and here we go.
Does anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody want to entertain a motion?
I make the motion to approve resolution that uh twenty twenty-five dash nine dash two that renews the Title VI Implementation Plan.
Do you just want to read by title only, or do you want to read the entire thing?
I have title only.
Okay.
I second.
So we have a motion and a second by Craig, all those in favor, raise your right hand, motion carries.
Is that on the motion to read by title only?
Yes.
Okay, so now you gotta vote.
Right.
So I make the motion to pass this ordinance twenty twenty-five dash nine dash two on first reading?
It's a resolution on ordinance.
You don't need one reading.
Resolution.
Yeah.
Second.
Yeah, we have a, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, raise your right hand, motion carries. I was just correcting, he said ordinance and it's a resolution, so. Okay, so this passes now. Our next item is our um, County Board of Commissioners ordinance twenty twenty-five dash seven.
Yeah, the only thing you need to do here is you have to, the statute requires that you file it.
Okay.
Statute doesn't tell you where to file it, it just says you have to file it. So I would ask that you uh file, have it directed, it be filed in the, with the minutes of this meeting.
Okay. Do you want, so we make a motion in that regarding that?
A motion.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, I make a motion um regarding this County Board of Commissioners ordinance twenty twenty-five dash seven. Um, petition for voluntary annexation of real estate into the town of Kirkland, Indiana, and transfer of roads within the boundaries of the town of Kirkland. I ask that these um ordinance be filed with our meeting minutes for tonight in our notes. Do we have a motion?
Second.
And a second? All those in favor, raise your right hand, motion carries.
They were really quick on doing that too.
Yeah, they were.
Yeah.
They knew it was coming.
Um, and our next item is, is in relation to this too, it's a resolution um, twenty twenty-five dash nine dash three, adopting a fiscal plan and defined policy for the annexation of properties contiguous to the town of Kirkland, Indiana pursuant to ordinance number.
Yeah, and the ord, that ordinance number will fill in later after we adopt, you adopt, you can adopt your fiscal plan before you finish adopting the ordinance, but you have to have a public hearing
Okay.
on your annexation, so we cannot do that. And there's, it's really tough, they, you have to wait so many days before you can have the hearing. You have to have the notes, to get your notice published, but you have to complete it within thirty days.
I remember that from the annexation we did a, a while ago.
Yeah.
Right, and so you guys will have a special meeting on October the eighth.
Okay.
Um, and I will get a notice tomorrow for that public hearing. Thank you for that, step by step.
What time, what time was, is that like it, what time we're gonna do that special meeting, or?
What time do you guys?
It's on a Wednesday?
It's a Monday night, isn't it, or?
October eighth is a Wednesday.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't look at mine. What, what's good for you Brent, because I know you're the one that struggles getting here too with Craig, but.
Well, I can't do Wednesdays because I go to church and it's a noble call.
Okay. We just have to make sure we have.
Looks we have four.
Yeah, we're good, we have. Can anybody else try to make it on that Wednesday, the eighth, what time? Do you guys want to, can you guys do six o'clock then?
Five.
Yes.
Let's do six, so we don't have to, okay. Alright. So does anyone want to entertain a motion then to go ahead and adopt the resolution tonight?
Basically, when you do an annexation, you have to adopt a fiscal plan. Now, in this case, we came to the conclusion that there is no capital expenditures that are gonna have to be, because it's an existing road. It's my understanding that we won't need to buy any additional equipment. Where I think already plowing it, is that right Billy? You know, uh, the reason why we're jumping all through these hoops is we can't have it tr, a count for our mileage that we get compensated for.
And you can't fix it.
We can't fix it with community crossing grant money, because it's, half of the right of way is in the county, and the other half of the right of way is in the city.
Okay.
So that's, that's the deal.
I adopt a motion uh, from the resolution twenty twenty-five dash nine dash three.
And also Jefferson Street going out of town. So one side is.
From the rainbow to the mouth.
I heard you Craig.
And the other side is counting. So.
Thanks for being here. Yeah, I just.
Okay, Craig was starting a, a motion here, so I'll let you finish.
I adopt a motion to pass resolution twenty twenty-five dash nine dash three. Adopting a fiscal plan.
Should we read the whole title or?
I make the motion, read it on title only.
Okay.
I make a motion to pass resolution twenty twenty-five dash nine dash three on title only. Second.
So we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, raise your right hand, motion carries. And now you need to do one to pass.
Yeah, pass.
Not pass it, yeah.
I make a motion to pass resolution twenty twenty-five dash nine dash three. Second.
So we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, raise your right hand, motion carries. Our next um, our next ordinance, um. This is actually our annexation ordinance, but are we just like introducing this tonight then, or?
Well, you can pass it on first reading.
We can't finish, right?
You can't finish.
Alright.
But that's good that we're doing it on first reading, because I think there might be a question whether we can pass it on both readings next time with, with a member absent.
Okay.
Well, I'll, if, if that's the case, I'll try to make it in sixth, but there's no guarantee.
Okay.
Well, but if, if we pass it tonight, we, we can pass it with three votes on, on October eighth.
Oh.
Okay, so you, you don't.
It has to be unanimous, otherwise.
Yeah. I actually read the statute on whether it's unanimous even if you have someone not at.
Oh, the hearing?
Yeah. No, for this, we're fine. For the, for that's in, on third, on second reading, we're fine.
I make a motion to um, to, to pass ordinance um, twenty twenty-five dash nine dash four. An ordinance annexing certain territory to the town of Kirkland, Indiana, placing the same within the corporate boundaries thereof, and making the same a part of the town of Kirkland, Indiana, by um, by title only.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second by Craig, all those in favor, raise your right hand, motion carries. I make a motion to pass ordinance twenty twenty-five dash nine dash four. An ordinance annexing certain territory to the town of Kirkland, Indiana, placing the same within the corporate boundaries thereof, and making the same a part of the town of Kirkland, Indiana, on first reading.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, second by Craig, all those in favor, raise your right hand, motion carries. Do I have to finish anything else when I'm done then?
You're done with this.
This one, okay, all right. I want to make sure it's done, okay. And this will, we will do at the, we'll finish this, um, ordinance at our October eighth meeting, so. For a second reading.
And the fiscal plan that you adopted would become moot if, if.
We move it by then, right?
Well, if, if it were defeated.
Oh, gotcha, okay, all right. And then, um, Tara has put together a, um, a resolution, um, declaring a dormant fund account, so she can move it over to our rainy, rainy day fund.
There's a whole two dollars and forty-nine cents on it. But in order to, and it's, it is a dormant account. It was created whenever the previous park board was taking donations for the pickleball courts. Well, it only could be used for that, so we can't use the fund anymore.
Okay.
But it has to have the formality of you guys getting rid of it before I can transfer two dollars and forty-nine cents.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash nine dash five. Resolution is thirty.
Second.
And then, is that by title only?
Yes.
Okay.
Do they need to do by title only? We never did before.
Would you title only for a resolution?
Like this?
I, don't know that you need to.
Okay, I thought we had to, I wasn't sure. Okay, so we have a, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, this resolution passes. Sorry, we're going back and forth with the resolution ordinance. I'm just trying to. Yeah.
I can do it, and this is going off our tech.
And we need us to sign that right, or?
Yeah.
He's got time, okay. I've gotta stack down our priorities, Tara. Yes, and we'll, I'll get with Jay on that and set it in here, yeah. I'll have Jay update us on all that.
What, resolutions?
No, on something else.
Okay.
So, our next item.
Really? We will need to probably send a copy of the county's ordinance ceding jurisdiction to us on those other two roads to IDM, and I have no idea who to send it to, do you?
Well, I don't know that we have to send it to IDM. We gotta send it to NDOT.
That's, I said IDM, I meant NDOT.
And, uh, and, and not only do we have to get the information from the county where they relinquished it, we have to have a copy of the paperwork where we took it in or accepted it. So we've gotta have a copy of the minutes tonight and the ordinance that we passed and, you know, it's, it's gotta show.
Have everything together, right? Okay.
Yeah, it's gotta show a trail where the county got rid of it. We voted to take it, ordinance accepting it.
Okay.
And so forth and so on.
We don't need an ordinance to accept it, since it's already in.
Resolution or, anyway, whatever we annex or add in or whatever, it all has to show a paper trail.
Okay, we can either do a resolution next meeting, or probably we could just, we've already voted to accept the petition.
Mm-hmm.
If we could show in the minutes that that was, that, that by accepting the petition, the town was accepting responsibility for the, uh, maintenance of those two streets, I think that would, should be sufficient for IDM.
I think that gets covered under when, when, when we approve the fiscal plan and definite policy for annexation.
But, because that, I don't address that in the fiscal plan, because those areas are already within, entirely within the city limits.
I'll have to bring that to look, did, did I give you a copy of when Capstone was built, I showed you where the town, something about the town was gonna be responsible for.
Yeah, I've got that here.
Did I send it to you?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Would that be sufficient?
Well, I mean, we could show that, and we could show, I mean, the eighteen thirty-six plat of this town shows that Kirk Street is entirely within the town.
Yeah, it's quite like the first street.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you want me to amend my motion I made earlier to add that, or do you want, we gotta do something different?
If you guys wanna send it to me, I mean, I can just put it on October. Or, well, if, do you plan to apply for CCNG funds this month? Because it, oh, well, in October. It's open from October first to the thirty-first, if it's this month.
Yeah, I can, I can do that, but I don't know that East Jefferson will make the, the cut.
Okay, because.
The other two streets, the other two streets could possibly make the cut, but East Jefferson paper trail won't be, I mean, the final.
It'll be until the eighth.
Yeah, the final.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's, it's gonna, that might be pushing, but the other two I can't. And if, if, you know.
Well, if not, the next, because they changed the program, so now it's only one power per year.
July before we can do again.
Uh-huh, and then July from there, thereon.
Yeah. And then we'll have X amount of dollars that we can spend to do, you know, paving on our own.
In our match.
Yeah.
Went from twenty-five percent to twenty percent. That's one of the only good things that came out of the legislation.
So I don't need to add to my motion at this time? You think it's?
Well, why don't you go ahead and, and adopt the, just move to accept Kirk Street and, uh, East Monroe, right?
Jeff Jefferson.
Yes.
No, 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 it's not Jefferson, East Monroe. Jefferson is what we're annexing.
Yeah.
Uh, that those city, that those ten streets which are within the town are accepted by the town of Kirkland for maintenance and, uh, repair.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and name them by street.
Okay.
Kirk, you know, like West Kirk Street and East Monroe Street.
Okay, I wrote it down.
Yeah, put those in the name of the.
So show that it, so I think as long as we showed that we
Yeah.
approved that in our minutes, I think that should be.
Can you add it, add that to my motion then? That, if everyone's okay with me adding that to my motion, so.
Let me see what one that was for. Twenty twenty-five what?
Was it?
Was it?
That was a motion to, uh, accept the, uh, or to, to accept and file the petition for annexation.
For the county one?
Yes.
So add to the county area.
That we accept the.
Roads.
Yeah.
Okay.
For the maintenance and repairs.
Oh, seven.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so that we're also accepted the, uh.
Responsibility for the maintenance and repair to West Kirk Street and then East Monroe.
I got you.
Okay. Our, our next item, um, we have on our, um, agenda is an ordinance for stormwater management. But we've had several, um, emails and questions going back and forth, and I think I'm gonna see if Jay can help us with, like, he sent an email out late today.
Yeah, and I apologize for that. I wrote that email Friday.
Oh, no.
And I, I must have swit, you know, gone and, and, and had to look at something. Got moved into my brass, and I didn't realize it.
We are all guilty.
Until late afternoon today. So I, I thought, oh my God.
Jay, that is no excuse. You're a lawyer.
That's right. Lawyers never make a mistake.
That's what you say.
That's why there's courts of appeal.
But, and is it, so why, I was trying to, she printed the email off, and I was kinda trying to read it before the meeting started. Are we tabling this for right now? Because we have to check with our, we have to get our board together, and it has to.
Yeah, what I realized when I went back and read the ordinance, and you raised a good point about, do we have to have a public hearing? And the answer is yes.
Because it has to do with the rate.
Because it has to do with the rate, is this town council doesn't have authority to adopt the rate. That has to be adopted by the board of, the, the board of directors of the Storm Water Management Department. And then that raises the question is, who are the? Who's on the board of direct?
Do we have a storm?
Yeah, uh, it's me, Jerry, and Brent.
Okay.
I know you guys do try to meet, but then one or two people at least would always forget about it, and I don't think you guys have tried in a long time.
We haven't met in, been. Even, even when we published it, I'd come up here and I'd be the only one, nobody'd show up.
So what do you guys?
Well, what we, what we could do is, uh, we could have the, schedule the Storm Water Board to meet at what, at six, well, we can't, because you can't be here, can you?
On Monday? Oh, only eight.
Yeah, I was gonna say you could have, you, then you could have both public hearings at the same time. This is what I was gonna do, is try to kill two birds with one stone and run one ass.
Could you be here? What if you did the public hearing at seven? Could you be here at six thirty?
Well, his, that's church night, though, for.
Oh, that's one of, he's one of the.
What if, what if we did it at, what if we had the, uh, meeting of the, uh, Board of Directors of Storm Water Management at five thirty? Would that work for you?
I can try to make it. Usually I'm coming home about that time.
Or we could say five forty-five. Do you come home and then go to church, to Noblesville?
Yes.
Why don't we just change the day of it?
Well, we, there's only one day when it actually works to have the.
I'll do it at five thirty. I'll make sure.
Or would five forty-five be better?
I, I'll, I'll try to make it at five thirty.
Okay, so five thirty, you guys are going to meet the, the board for the stormwater, right?
Yeah.
And this is just to have a meeting for them, correct?
This is to have a public hearing.
Oh, okay.
Where they, where they will approve the, uh, increase. They're gonna approve, we gotta do a, we gotta change that.
It's supposed to be a hearing. Are you gonna send me what to send?
I'm gonna all, you, you docs.
Okay.
And then what's our, at six? Jay?
Yeah.
What if on this, on the eighth, if it's not approved?
Well, then we won't, then we won't, uh, if we, if we, if you don't approve it, then we won't raise the rates.
Does it need to wait till the eighth to do that voting?
You gotta, you gotta have it, you gotta have it public, you gotta put it in the newspaper. We could have it another, if you wanna, all, all I'm trying to do is be cheap, is insane.
We like cheap.
Insane, one.
Not cheap.
Frugal, frugal. Is, is be frugal and, and make one advert, legal ad suffice. We could certainly do the legal ad for the, uh, stormwater increase and, and do it at the, the Octo, and just have it scheduled for the regular October meeting.
So have.
But, but we run two ads then.
Right. It's cheaper to do it all in one ad. Those ads aren't cheap. But what you're saying is, you just wanna do the annex, annexation, public hearing on the eighth you can, or you can just combine them, or you guys can wait to the regular meeting on the thirteenth to do the stormwater. Does the, does the stormwater have to be unanimous?
No. Just has to pass.
And then I also.
But, but the stormwater, yeah, I think it would, if two out of three vote for it, that's a quorum, you know, quorum would be two, I would think.
Because they'll be the only ones voting in that public hearing, right, for the stormwater?
That's right.
Okay, and then it would go in front of the whole council on the thirteenth to approve it?
They have to, they, it's, they have to set the rate, you have veto power over it.
But then I have another question. The law also states that two, that you can't have more than two from the same party on the Storm Water Board. I believe, unless Jerry, did you run as a Republican? Brent? I know you are. So how do we get, how do we get around that? Because I think it'll be hard to.
Surely we have a, somebody who can say.
I wanna know who that is.
You don't have to say you're a Democrat. All you have to say is, I'm not a Republican.
I'll be a Democrat for one hour.
You don't have to be a Democrat. You could just be an independent.
I'll be an independent for one hour.
They have to, does it matter how it's registered, or just what they?
It doesn't say, but, you know, I.
I know you won't know. How could you, I know, that'd be hard for you to do.
I'll be an independent for an hour, so.
So what, what do you guys wanna do? Do you guys wanna do this to them together? Do you wanna wait and do the other one?
I'll be here at five thirty that day.
Just go and do both at the same date.
So that he can send me what to send, and they can go all in one. No, the special meeting.
Special meeting.
We have to have a special meeting for the annexation.
Yeah, because we won't be within our thirty days if we go to our regular meeting, is why we can't.
Okay, so both on the eighth, correct? Five thirty and six.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. You guys will vote, just three of you for one, the whole council for the other. And then the whole council again on the thirteenth for whatever you guys have come up with for stormwater.
Okay.
They roll on the same page, right, Jay?
So are we ready to move on then? Our next item is, um, our old business. And we have a sanitary sewer, um, invoice from Commonwealth Engineers. It's in the packet that Tara provided for you.
Um, and we are expecting another one. They just didn't get it to any end time, but I think it's a key form. We'll have a final project invoice, like it closed out.
Okay.
But it hasn't, it didn't come in time, so that'll be on October.
Yeah, they go, they've got left easy retaining.
Yeah, okay.
I make a motion to approve the invoice to Commonwealth Engineers in the amount of nine thousand four hundred forty-nine dollars and sixty-two cents.
I second.
So we have a motion and a second by Craig. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. And we are ready to move on to the park. Billy?
Jay? I have four bids for playground equipment at the park. Uh, when the previous park board, uh, was in charge, uh, they requested thirty thousand to be set aside to be spent at the park for playground equipment this year. Uh, so I am following through with that. Um, and so the money is, is sitting there to be used specifically for playground equipment. Uh, and there's quite a few papers here, or I would have made color copies for everyone. But what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna run through the four companies that gave me bids.
Okay.
And then I will start at one end of the table and let y'all look through each and every packet of her company, uh, and then, or we could just use the bottom two, the, the lowest, the two lowest bids, and then we can look at those and compare. Uh, the first bid for playground equipment came from, uh, Play Pros in the amount of twenty-nine thousand nine hundred forty-one dollars ninety-five cents. The next bid is from Midstates Recreation. And the total cost for that is thirty-six thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars plus another eight thousand one hundred and sixty-nine dollars for shipping and installation.
Did the first one include shipping and installation?
Yes, the first one. Yes, the first one included shipping and installation. Uh, the third company is the Swingset Factory Depot. Uh, with a total price of twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty cents. And it does include shipping and handling. And the final company is Pro Playground. With a total bid of twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
Including shipping.
That includes shipping and handling, uh, shipping and installation.
Okay.
They all include installation?
All all of them include shipping and installation. Uh, to be able to get us more for our money, um, we elected to do the groundwork ourselves and then do the cover mulch ourselves. So that saved us a little money on that.
We're looking at then maybe, you're looking at Play Pros or Swingset Factory Depot then?
If that was the two lowest bids you got, yes.
Okay. There, those three were kinda close, but.
The equipment, I've seen them, the quotes, they they vary a little bit, so that's why I want you guys to see them, to see what you guys wanna do.
Billy, is the equipment comparable?
That last one though, that, those little single things look a little cheesy.
Yeah, I mean, they're they're comparable and and these are respectable companies, uh.
But what's your recommendation though? Like, I know we have lowest bids, but what's your recommendation on what would you look for? That's what.
Well, I mean, each one of them gave me what I asked. I was looking for a structure, a playground structure for the two to five-year-olds. Uh, I was looking for a teeter totter assembly for the two to five-year-olds. I was looking for a couple of spring-loaded characters for two to five-year-olds.
Okay.
And I was also looking for a monkey bar or some type of type of hand climbing coordination for the five to twelve-year-olds. Uh, seeing as how they've got a pretty good sized structure for themselves. And then, uh, one company, uh, actually, we had some, uh, money left over and they added, uh, two to three little, uh, music noise makers for the two to five-year-old playground area.
And and I might add, if I could, that, um, we'd like to find a grant, maybe the community foundation, if we can get somebody to help us write a grant to try to get like an ADA accessible merry-go-round, something.
I've already gave Billy information on that.
Okay.
To help with the grant, so he's got.
I think an ADA would be great, because I think that, you know, we might not know of any kids that might help, but maybe this is because we don't know. Or maybe there's somebody out in the area, maybe not in town here, that would be thrilled to be able to be included on one of the pieces.
Okay. What was that company though, that you said was adding the extra stuff on there? Was that one you liked?
My my two recommendations, uh, would actually, monetarily, we would be the the two cheapest monetarily. Um, as far as the equipment uh, that, uh, I'm given, it would actually be, uh, the Swingset Factory Depot and the Pro Playground. Between those two.
And they're so close.
Okay, cause that's not, to me, those amounts are not that critical. They're all right there together, they're not that much different, you know?
And one of those, the the one that you were talking about that's gonna add the music makers?
The the one that added the, uh, the the extra stuff was the Swingset Factory Depot.
Okay.
Let's go with them.
He has some pictures.
And it, I mean, I I I got it down the beast too.
Okay.
If you wanna look at their products before you make the final decision.
And we have had somebody make a donation that, um, for around, for the kiddie area. Uh, that I don't know how much mulch would cost, Billy, do you have a ballpark? Do you?
I have no idea.
It'll come out.
If you buy it by the truckload, it's a lot cheaper when you buy it bulk, so I I don't know. And it's possible, you know, but we can get it donated, but that's, you know, we'll see how things go.
Have we looked into rubber, Billy?
There's no way in the world we can afford rubber. Rubber mulch is four times the cost of wood mulch.
But it doesn't go away like wood?
No, it doesn't go away, but it's, it it's, it's way more expensive.
We looked at it when we were putting crysons in at home, and it's like ouch.
Yeah.
Well, they're looking at it. On the benches and you said trashcans too, how does somebody go, if they wanted to go about like donating money for a bench, donating money for a?
You come come to town hall and see Tara.
I'll give you a receipt.
And whatever.
What's the prices on the seats and trashcans again?
Um, if you want to donate the full cost of, um, a bench and get a plaque on there, of course we pay for the plaque, but five nineteen fifty. And then I think the trashcans are five thirty-two.
Yeah, that sounds right, you told me, yeah.
Without having it, Brent.
Yeah, I think it was around five hundred and thirty-two dollars.
So the benches and trashcans are about the same?
Yeah, but we have enough benches, see that's thing. So that'd be up to him if he thought that we could.
Well, I mean, we could always put more benches in. Right now, our need is trash receptacles. Uh, not only do we need about four more to start with at the park, but we're gonna put them downtown as well. We will be totally separate from the park, so if you donate it for the town, then it'll have to go in another.
That'll have to be a new fund created.
That'd be another form, uh, fund created. Uh, but right now, we're looking at, uh, four more, at least four more, uh, trash receptacles at the park. Uh, but we do need, uh, a couple of little kiddie picnic tables and a couple of kiddie benches for the two to five-year-old playground area.
I don't know that you're ready to install those yet though.
Well, those, the benches will be solidly done, but the picnic tables themselves will just be set in in the the area at the playground.
He eventually wants to also put a fence around the kiddie area. To make it nicer for parents to just look at his.
Can it also be built out of wood?
No.
Did you see the trashcan out there that we collected the caps in that? Been sitting out there?
That's that's our, that's the result of.
Well, we're thinking, we're thinking about getting a couple. Maybe one for downtown park and one for uptown.
Which is fine, but I would need to create a fund for that first. And that one for the car.
Yeah, but whenever you get that done.
And delivery and installation on these is anywhere from four to eight weeks.
Okay, on this, um, this pro playgrounds? This has like two bigger pieces, right? There's, uh, O Porter Pass and then there's a.
Yeah, there there should be a structure for the two to five-year-olds.
Oh, that's what the other one is, I got it.
Yeah, and the other one is for five to twelve.
Okay, that's why there's the other piece there too then. Wow, that's that's close, isn't it? Depends on. You can see the difference on that one, past the last one. While Craig is finishing up, what does the council think on those two quotes that just cast by your desk or your?
I like the Swing, Swingset Factory Depot.
Okay. I kinda like this, the Swingset Factory too.
No, either, like I said, either or would be fine, which is whatever you.
I kinda like that one, but I might want.
I get, I get more pieces for the money with the Swingset Factory, but they're both.
Yeah, and like the Pro Play, Pro Playgrounds, like the spring month or, you know, like you get two bids on it.
Yeah.
It'd be best we could just pick and pick and put them, one make one, you know?
So do we need to make a motion for this?
Excuse me.
I I would say probably.
I I don't know, I kinda like that one.
I like, I like that one.
Jay, do they need to make a motion that they all agree on which one or?
Yeah, cause he needs to know what to buy. We have to have a motion.
For Swingset Factory, is that what you guys?
I'll make the motion that we do Swingset Factory Depot in the amount of twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty cents.
A second.
So we have a motion and a second by Craig. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Oh, these are done.
I think that'll make, um, some families happy that there's more out there. Cause we've taken away pieces in the past few years.
Tara's stuff and Billy looking at. Billy, do you have anything else on any of that?
No, that's all I have.
Okay. Um, our next item is, we have an adjustment in our packet regarding four eleven East Pike Street. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Um, I only had just a couple of things. Um, I've been, um, talking to Jay and Tara about a like a food mobile, um, permit that's like one page instead of like ten or fifteen pages that we currently have. Um, it was just a, we kinda went through, we tried to look at other things and add more information on them. And I I already sent you a copy of this once, but Tara and I have been tweaking it.
And I sent Tara.
Yeah, I've got both of your guys.
You have mine too. I didn't, I don't know if I have Jay's, but I know if you guys wanted to look at this again. We don't have to pass anything tonight, I'm just wanting to get it in front of you.
And I don't even know if it has to be passed to get the permit, you know, what we need, honestly. Do they even have to pass something like that? What did, you know, the application?
I made changes to it to try to add stuff that at least that's important on there, that we had to have, like locations and I had to add like driver's license information and.
Yeah, the the thing you don't have here, and I think you need is, is you know, we need to require that they give us a certi- a insurance certificate.
Yeah, she has that on there. I have it on there.
Where?
Number four. I mean, I have a list of stuff that they have to provide to us.
Okay.
And I was making it so that Tara and that the clerk's office can actually do this instead of coming forward the council.
It doesn't have to go in front of the council, they have.
It does say.
No, not on the, not on that.
The ordinance, the ordinance says it.
That they, the ordinance says that they have to come here for.
Yeah.
To approve their change permit.
Yeah.
So that's why we're trying to make it simple.
Someone came in and, um, wanted a permit and thought it was the worst one he's ever seen, even worse than Lafayette, so.
Well, it's Sheridan's.
It's, that's right, it's very thorough, but I, you know, we haven't had anybody come all summer, because I think we're not along, not around, that ours is like everything that you're first born, you know?
And you know, that that that's the question of how many of you really want it?
That's not a.
I mean, the bottom line is what you're doing is you're you're competing with your, with your local businesses. I'm not saying you shouldn't have them at all, but.
Cause I know when they were sitting here and and, you know, they have to stay so many feet away. Um, and, you know, I think some of them might sit up here when like the coffee shop isn't even open. Booker's would be. Um, and and they sell, some of them sell like just a completely different product than what you could find here.
We're good at your coffee shop. We worried about food trucks.
I mean, if you guys.
Not now, in the beginning it was.
If you guys wanna, like, look to see what I kind of.
Yeah, and and I could send just a one more page, so.
I sent him a bunch of pages for Tara to do it.
We can send you a copy and like, like she has commissary location on there, I was questioning, do we need that?
I took it off.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I'm not sure about the commissary.
I took it off, yeah, I took it off.
And then you had, like, I was looking at both of yours, I like her format, um, but like you have like the under sign here by represents on the back of yours.
Yeah, I really think that needs to be there.
Right, I do too, I do too. Remember that email I sent you today that was like, maybe we should have this or that or?
So I can maybe tweak this and maybe we can look at it again next month or something or?
Or I can just send it to you as being her work on it or?
Yeah, we can do that.
I mean, I mean, even the ordinance, you know, it talks about bendering on the size of our streets, I mean, we could even think of it just having that, you know, food trucks are gonna come to town, let it know the people at by the water tower.
Yeah.
Cause you could get two or three at a time there maybe at some times, you know?
As long as they say we're gonna make the fire hydrant and.
Correct.
And all that, so, yeah, but I do thank you maybe for working on this.
And, um, the only other thing I needed just to add, um, and this is kind of just like an update. I know like, um, regarding the bridge, um, they're working on going to the park and using the enclosed shelter house. Um, they have been, Dave Harnes and Bill Brock has been meeting with Craig and Jerry about getting a, um, a construction, construction agreement and then a building agreement. We're doing the construction agreement first. And I know they've been trying to tweak that. Um, but they are going to go ahead and have the architect work on the drawing so that they can kinda show that to Jerry and Craig too, having the architect go ahead and finish those up, so we can have something more to present. But we kinda wanna get on this so we feel like we can start asking for funds and matching grants and stuff, but until we get some stuff signed, we feel like we can't really ask.
And in our last meeting, in our last meeting, uh, updating the electricity, um, some new electric for event trailers, uh, upgrading the panel in the building, putting a transformer out there to run the lines underground into the building. Uh, they're proposing, I should have brought it tonight, but I know we gotta have a agenda for that.
No, I mean, that's, we don't have to talk about that tonight, but there's, that's stuff they can, they can bring to the council, they can tell us at a meeting. I was just giving you guys a brief update on this.
So then, when they come to me and Jerry, we just well, shouldn't we have to tell you guys what's going on so we're not blindsided when they come?
I know they're gonna ask for money.
Yeah. I mean, they're gonna, yeah, they're gonna ask for money, but, you know, what are the obligations, you know, who's taking care of the utilities after it's built, since the building is initially gonna be ours?
I think there's a lot of details that need to be thought of beforehand instead of later.
I have it all wrote out and I need, I would, I think, maybe I can bring it down, you can make copies and give it to everybody.
And and, and you know, and here's the deal, everybody might get along right now. That board could quit, you guys could all quit, and it'd be completely different personalities, so, you know, there might be a hard part to be like, hey, I really want this in the agreement now, but it might save you later, so, you know, as long as there's no hard feelings between you guys at the bridge being like, you know, we need to cover ourselves here, you know what I mean? Cause you just can't see five, ten years down the road.
Right.
Um, and will there be something in there be like, okay, this is good for five years and then we're gonna revisit, that gives the other party.
Right. Right.
Chance to say, hey, I don't like this part of it, we need to.
Change the problem, whatever.
Yeah.
So I think what the bridge was wanting to do first was just get the construction agreement done first. And you can kinda look at the other, the other building agreement, but we kinda need a construction agreement first to see if we can get, get stuff done, that's what our purpose was, but just wanted to give you guys a quick update on that. Does anybody, any other council have anything?
Oh, the only thing, the only thing, um, I might bring it up or whether you have heard or heard, haven't, um, and Jake and Al Smith, we had a heck of a turnout for the area planning commission last Tuesday night. We had even, we moved up to the courtroom on the third floor and we had people standing up, sitting in all the seats and people standing in on the wall, all back in the audience portion. And it came down to the case that there was so many unanswered questions and concerns, and you know, they had a big rally there in Frankfurt at the park here last, you know, the Saturday before. Everybody that got up and spoke was negative, was against it, and really, there was a lot that was unanswered, you know, so one ended up happening, the area planning commission made no, no decision, we just passed it on to the commissioners who are the ones that really have to make the final decision.
So you're talking about the data side.
Yeah. And you know, it's going on every place, uh, Boone County's got the same issue, uh, there right outside of Lebanon, so it's going on every place, these places are wanting to come in.
Okay.
And, and the problem is they use water to cool all the equipment, water has no good after that.
No, no, they're also now, some of them are, are clear.
Yeah, right, right, but you know, it, you know, what, a hundred thirty-five jobs? I mean, who actually in the county, are they gonna hire to work there, are they gonna bring people from the outside so it's not gonna help the employment? And then on secondly, they're gonna want abatments, you know, they're gonna start off making tons of money, why do they need abatments, we're letting them come to our county.
Is this not gonna be annexed in the Frankfurt, that'll be a Frankfurt issue and not a.
Well, that's what it was for, it was them to annex it, but they just.
It's off on one hundred.
Yeah, out by, uh.
Actually, it's.
It's a good county.
It's in the county.
So, but they're, so they're not accent, asking Frankfurt to annex them in?
No.
Okay.
Not now.
But they were at one.
They were.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's part of their problem is, is they, they haven't had their act together as well as they should have, in term, but quite frankly, they're, the end user isn't totally known yet.
I think there's an N D A, right?
What?
Isn't there like non-disclosure, or is it?
No, it's not a non-disclosure, it's, it's, they, they, at the hearing, they admitted they did not have a definite con- agreement with a, a user for that site.
Which would probably end up being like Meta or Amazon or.
But for them, but, but you know, for the farmland there that they're gonna zone in, you know, uh, I mean, it is kinda agri on one side, I mean, it is farmland, but that could always be zoned in or annexed in later, at a later date, you know, uh, for, for industrial, cause it's, it, that's the area of what is growing, but there's just too, there's so many unknowns, right?
Yeah, I mean, the, yeah, the issue is, is not whether this is an appropriate place for an industry because it is.
Right.
Uh, the question is, if you have one of these, what conditions you should put on it on the zoning, cause zoning is your one chance to put conditions that they have to voluntarily accept.
So could they give them an abatement and then say for twenty years, and then in twenty years they close up shop and like, we're going to someplace else and then.
Absolutely.
And then that abatement for the citizens is, you know.
First of all, they weren't asking, were not asking for a payment.
Right, not yet.
Well, and, you know, just because you rezoned it doesn't mean you have any obligation to grant tax abatement. But the other thing to take into account is with, with tax abatement is therein, you abate the increase in assessed valuation based upon the improvements. So if you granted abatement, uh, for the product, uh, project, the building would not, you could have a, and you, it could be a hundred percent declining to, you know, over ten years, or it, there's a couple of different ways you can do it, but the dirt, the underlying ground would change from agricultural usage and taxation, which is very, very favored for, for agriculture lower, to you probably assess that, instead of being assessed at four thousand dollars an acre, which is I think what ag is going right now, it would be assessed probably at between sixty and a hundred thousand dollars an acre. So there is a big increase, even, I mean, you get an increase in assessed valuation. Now, if you didn't grant tax abatement and you also then had a billion dollar building on it, now we're talking real increases in, in, in your assessed valuation. Now, how that all, and the, the thing that's made this a tough call, a tougher call, let's put it that way, is, is our, our, our new funding system or statute for that.
Right.
You know, it, it, it makes it very difficult to say no to, to.
Yes.
Investment because you're losing, you're losing other sources.
Uh huh, we were only affected, DLG have estimated about twenty-six thousand for this first year, but in a couple of years it's supposed to hit the worst.
Where do they get their water?
They would get their water from the city of Frankfurt.
Right, and, and.
And who's gonna pay for that?
That, that's the thing, you know, the water, the waste, you know, I guess they're gonna drain it into a rain ditch, but if you, if you can't re-purify that water, you really wanna put it in the ground now.
That's a problem, you suck it out of the ground and then.
You know, I mean, there's just a lot of things, you know?
Yeah.
Prime example of that was at I R P, Indianapolis Raceway Park, they used to be on the well system, come U S National, everybody within a half a mile of that track had no water on their wells, that's how far they would suck the water down.
Right, and, and there's, and you have the same thing with the, uh, as you go into South Bend, they got that, uh, what is that for your field, they make it out of corn, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good thing there because when they don't have it on, everybody's basement floods.
Let's try to keep on topic, so let's keep it in the county, let's stay with the county right now. Anybody else before I close the meeting? You had something Tara or?
Yes.
Just wanted to close the meeting.
I have two things, um.
I knew Tara had something else.
First of all, Halloween, when would you guys like to set perpetrating for and the times?
Never.
Well, I mean, that's Christmas.
Nobody comes to our house anyway.
I'm gonna TP your house now, I knew you were gonna say to you.
When do we normally do it?
I always. Lights off at our house.
Halloween, yeah.
On Halloween.
Halloween nights, the Friday night, so.
Whenever you guys wanna set it, when is the downtown?
I, I was talking to Courtney about that, we haven't verified that yet, but, um, when do you need to know this by?
I mean, I don't really even need to know theirs, I need to know ours.
Let's do ours six to eight then on Friday, October thirty-first, and if they do it on this, on the next day, on Saturday, November first, it might be like four to six or something, but I'll verify that date and time for the merchants.
Okay, at least I'll, at least I'll know ours, I didn't.
Is that okay with you guys, six to eight then for the town?
I didn't wanna wait till. I didn't wanna wait till October and then just give people a couple of weeks' notice.
Okay.
I'll put something out there on town page or something this week, but.
Let me try to ask about merchants and then I'll, maybe you both.
Okay, and then the last thing is, um, and I know Jerry that you've mentioned this in the past, but there's a central dispatch agreement that we give up part of our lit that for, um, I think a few years ago they came to you guys way before my time and were going to build a EMS building, um, you guys signed an agreement with them, giving them so much of your lit, they came back, um, in twenty, I think it was, I don't know, twenty fourteen maybe, and wanted you guys to keep on giving them part of the lit, and if you guys want to get out of it, it has to be done by the end of, I think, September every year, so this is your only chance to do that, so, you know, that's up to you guys. But if nobody gets out of it, and I just, I wasn't even sure if all of you were aware that you were doing that or remembered, that you were doing that, that you're giving part of your distribution away to the county. But it'll be too late to do it in October, so they need, it has to be done by the end of September. So. If you could do nothing, it just automatically continues.
Do you know what a percentage is right now on that, do by chance know? Or have the amount by chance or? I don't remember the.
This one was fifty percent of your certified distributions of P S Lowit in years twenty fifteen to twenty nineteen. Twenty nineteen is when it ended and nobody, nobody, um, contacted the other, you have to contact the other party if you're not going to continue with it. So, so you don't want, you're not sure what our percentages are right now, well, it says fifty percent in the contract you guys signed.
With no dollar amount?
Yeah, I'd have to look, at least, at least eight to ten thousand dollars, I would think. I'd have, I'd have to look into it.
All the other towns still do it?
That I don't.
I think that's why we are continuing because all the other towns were as well.
I know, but.
What is this do though, what is, what do they do?
It's like everybody else was.
Right, and they may have gotten out of it, I don't.
My only, my only argument right now is, is for us to help pay our officers right now, and Frankfurt and their community have such bigger ways to get money than what we do.
You know, and.
That's my only struggle right now is we have just our town and it, we have to fight for, to get funds and we have to find ways to get it.
Yeah, cause you know.
So that's my only struggle.
Budget last year wasn't funded, and it's not this year either, but I noticed that you guys stopped buying equipment to try to help that fund, so with this recent legislation in the state, you know, libraries, counties, towns, cities, everybody is going to be affected. So, you know, it's up to you guys, not me, I just, um,
What does that money?
Wanted to let you guys know you had to decide.
What does that money fund? I, I don't know.
P S Lowit.
What is that?
Um, it's, uh, public safety, central dispatch. So we can't take that distribution and just like put it in the water or, you know.
Better call for the director Renee Craig before you pull it because I think every town still does it.
Do they? See, I, I don't know.
Do you see, do you see my argument though?
I do, but they still dispatch us and handle the calls.
I know, I, I'm torn, that's what I'm saying, I'm torn because
I don't speak for her, but.
We don't have a way to get extra funds.
She could tell you exactly what it goes for.
Was, did, who dispatched before this, before they asked for the money for the building? Who, did you?
Was it the sheriff's department that used to do the dispatch or a long time ago?
Because this was first signed in two thousand and nine.
Yeah.
Central dispatch was firing up, so.
No, not Renee, I got, I have her contact, like, hey Renee, we're in the middle of a com- of a meeting, no, this is not my decision, this is your guys' decision.
Well, I'll put you get some information.
How long do we got before we have to make a decision on that?
Well, this, this, um, yes.
So somebody called. Correct?
Cause all the other towns are still involved with it.
Well, she came one time when we were at town council meeting.
Did a couple of years.
And she talked to us.
And she talked to us and.
That was.
But our ta- our taxes don't pay for dispatch? When we get money on top of it?
We have to ask Renee, he doesn't know the answers to that, so.
I, I knew it was originally done because I had the papers when they wanted to build a building and then they came back like five years later and still wanted it to continue. It was before my time, I wasn't part of the conversation.
That's a hundred dollars per person.
I did build the building?
Huh?
I did build that building?
This was done like in two thousand and nine.
That's crazy.
That building has been done, and then from my understanding, they came back and.
Came back three, four years ago and they said that all the towns in Flint County were still doing it, that's why we still agreed to it.
It was first signed, it looks like in two thousand and nine, yes, November two thousand and nine. Uh, it's like you guys do whatever, I'm just making you aware that you still have this contract, and if you wanted to change it, if you told me, hey, in November that, hey, we still, you know, given up some of our lit, I would tell you, well, I think you have to wait.
And if the contract renews for how long?
Um, every year, let me find the part where it says.
Is it one year contract or?
It's just, it just keeps rolling over every year, yeah.
Till September, to the next year, yeah.
And do we have to, do we have to give them all of our P S Lowit or?
I think you guys can determine.
The percentage, well, they agree.
It's fifty percent right now.
Okay, so this agreement shall terminate on December thirty-first, twenty nineteen, but shall automatically renew there, thereafter on an annual calendar year basis unless and until written notice of intent to terminate is given by one party to this agreement to the other party, no later than September thirtieth of the year, at the end of which such terminations will be affected. Effective, so you guys would have to let them know by September thirtieth if you wanted to end it by the end of the year, can you pass this down to Jay so he can?
I, I remember all this, I'm.
And see, I, I wasn't part of it.
I did, I remember it, so.
You melted.
I, I didn't, I wasn't part of it, I don't have a, you know.
I just.
I receipt in our distributions and I'm the part that takes care of this baby side.
Well, they got their building built and that's what it was all about to start with, right? I do know their, the software we use, they have servers in there, and they, I mean, there's a lot of equipment in there and.
The technology part of it is expensive, I'm sure.
We don't pay a dime of that. It's what they use to, but again, I don't wanna mispeak, I'm just telling you that's what I, I think this came up a few years back and.
Right, and that's what Renee was telling us, that the upgrades that she had to do.
And at the time, I think all the towns still were doing it and but she could explain why. What, what it's used for, what's with that?
Right, yeah.
You know, the school put that referendum on a few years ago and then they came back and said we still want it, you know, it's kinda the same, I think.
I was letting Jay look through that for a second, but.
So we're doing this for the school too?
No, I'm gonna say it's kinda the same, the school puts a referendum on it and it's kinda that keeps going. When it was originally signed, you guys, well, not you guys, it was not all of, let me see, Mindy was on here.
Randy.
Randy, yeah, you're the only one that was on here when it was originally done. You guys gave a hundred percent of the two thousand and nine certified distribution, not to. you guys gave a hundred percent of the two thousand and nine certified distribution, not to exceed eighty-two hundred. You backed it down to seventy-five percent in twenty-ten, not to exceed ninety-two hundred. And then sixty percent for the, of the certified distributions for two thousand and eleven through the fourteen, inclusive, but not to exceed seventy-two hundred. And then you guys signed another in twenty-fourteen where you backed it down to fifty percent. And that has been going on since then. It didn't end in twenty-nineteen because nobody has ended it. So if you guys just wanna keep it to go on, we do nothing and it just.
So we get fifty percent of, of the P S Lowit now?
Yeah, we get three, we get lit and it's split up between certified shares, economic development and P S Lowit, which is public safety.
Right.
Right now, we're getting two thousand fifteen dollars and some odd cents per month for our P S Lowit. And I don't remember what I read that we're gonna get next year. Those are out. I, I don't remember what it was.
And that's our share of that fifty percent?
That's our fifty percent. They already take it out of the county before they send it to us. Our biggest share is certified shares is four thousand two hundred and some. Economic development is less than two thousand and I know P S Lowit is like twenty fifteen, maybe eighty-one, something like that. Um, and I only know that by heart because I, I receive them in every year, every, every month.
What happens if we only offer a point plus?
I, I just, you know, this is a conversation for.
I was letting Jay read that for a minute so I could get his input and then. I mean, I'm okay with contacting Renee. If I need to contact Renee, so. It doesn't hurt to get, gather information from her, so. I think I'm just more concerned with what we're facing with our finances. That's why I'm, that's why that crossed my mind because I'm worried about what's coming, that what's gonna hit our, hit our town, how we're gonna be affected with.
It will. It, it, it will. It's coming. This year was only twenty-six thousand and some, but just small town, that's still a lot of money.
Yeah.
So and the, the next two years is gonna get worse. I think they said twenty-seven or twenty-eight should be the worst. That's the bill I keep talking to you guys about every meeting. That's so important. Like, there's so many different changes.
I mean, I hear it on the news too. I mean, I also.
Um, you know, lit in a couple of years, you guys are gonna be faced with being able to, um, petition the county for your lit rate. That's changes coming.
Is it twenty-twenty-seven?
I believe.
I think that's what you told me was twenty-seven.
Yeah.
That's local income, right? That's what it stands for.
Mm-hmm, we get it sent from the county though, so.
It don't make sense to get petitioned with more money and give it half the way down.
To me, I just, you know, I do what you guys thought.
Just take the calls from all the other towns and how much percentage of your dispatch, are they actually doing per year?
It would be interesting to see what your percentage of.
That would be.
Of dispatches.
And then negotiate that population so that they're pretty much.
Right, you know, cause they're not gonna dispatch for us like they are like.
Every day.
Rossville.
Every day an ambulance comes from big county here, just about one or two. But I, I mean, I was, you got county and state.
And yeah, police dispatch, I'm sure.
Do you want us, do you, do any advice on that? Should we like look into this and maybe look at this again next year? Do we, do I contact Renee to get information now or? I don't know if I would have time to finalize this by the end of September. Cause I'd have to have a special meeting, right, to have a motion, right?
I, I would assume I would, you know, like I said, I was part of that years ago when you guys voted on this one.
Jerry, you wanna call her to get the information? Take some weight off?
I can call Renee. I know.
I mean, I'm waiting to see what Jay's, if he's gonna give me any information, but I'm just.
It says this agreement shall terminate December thirty-one, two thousand nineteen, but shall automatically renew on a calendar year basis and don't get notice by September third. Notwithstanding the termination provision set in paragraph seven point one above, either party to this agreement may terminate the agreement within ninety days advanced written notice given to the other party in the event that certified distributions of public safety low it has appeared not to become available and other funding sources are not readily available. Trying to figure out what the heck that really means. You know, one of my thoughts was what happens if we would give notice and say, we're giving you notice, but we're willing to, to discuss. We want, we're willing to reconsider that, but we're, we're gonna give you notice now so it doesn't automatically renew. But come in and talk to us about what, why we.
That would help, which would make.
We wanna, we wanna see, we wanna see.
Where it's going and what.
Yeah, we wanna see where it's going, how many, how many dispatches are sent. You know, are we paying, let's say we're paying five percent of the cost. My guess is it's not even that high. But say we're paying three percent of the cost. Are we getting, are three percent of the dispatches
Right.
to here or is it one percent?
Right, and those four out of five people up here that don't even really know anything that we're, that this is even about, that, you know, maybe, maybe someone should come, should come and talk to you guys, you know. I wasn't part of it either.
Should Tara contact Renee or can I contact Renee and ask her to come or do we have to come from the clerk or can I do?
Yeah, no, yeah, I think anybody can say, do it. Now, the question is, you could say, we wanna have, you could either have a special meeting to take care of it before September thirty. I, I think that's probably the best way to do it. The other way to do it would be to say, well, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're going to vote to terminate the contract.
And then go back and negotiate.
And then we'll go back and negotiate.
Because they're gonna have to, so they'll have to have time to get their paperwork together too to show us what all those areas.
Well.
And it, it's gonna be going for, I'm sure it's going for, you know, great, a great reason, you know.
But like Jay said, the percentage of it though, what is?
So I don't have a special meeting in two weeks and if she can make it in two weeks.
I think that's the best, the, the, that's taking the high road.
If she can't make it, then we can go to plan B.
Yeah.
Well, then if, if, if they won't, if they can't show up within the timeframe, you guys can do it, then you can have a special meeting on the thirtieth and, or twenty-ninth and say, we're out.
Then we could also then.
Re-look at it.
Re-look at.
And then not come back and tell us why we should give you some more, more of our money, our tax revenue.
Right, and I suspect it's going for a great reason, but.
I, I mean, it is, I'm sure, important and, and I'm sure it's expensive. It, it, the only real question is, are we paying, and, and we may be surprised to find out that fifty percent were underpaying our fair share. That's the other thing that you may find out.
Yeah, because, well, we get, for some reason, we get, and I'm gonna have to find out what, we get less than like Colback says and we have more population. So I'm not even sure why.
You have more, we have more population, Colback?
Uh-huh, a little bit.
Really, I didn't realize that.
Could, if I reached out to Renee and asked her about September the twenty-second or the twenty-ninth on Monday?
Let me know, cause I'll have to have forty-eight hours.
If I do another Monday, is that a day, that date good with you guys if I did another Monday?
Yeah, I just need forty-eight hours business days, business hours.
Forty-eight hours, yeah, business, not, not counting.
I'll reach out and find out which, and I'll try to do this.
Or holidays.
Right, and I don't think there's any other.
I would say holidays.
All right, I can reach out to her and ask her, so. And I can follow up with you guys on it. Okay. Is there anything else?
I don't have any.
Okay, meeting adjourned.
Here, who's, it's this back.
It was Tara's. I can just lay it out.
Why don't you just?
Do you want me to send that to you?
Yeah, scan that.
I'll, I'll go make a copy right now.
Okay.
Yeah, I remember all.
I gotta go make a copy.
They don't remember, but I remember it.
Yeah, I remember it too. And it, and it really is important.
Right.
You're so happy to see, you came here happy to come out.
This is good. I'm gonna go make a copy.
Yeah, we got.
Now it's going on here.
Yeah.
All right, I'm getting.
Hey, buddy.
Do you have?
Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Sending you a thank you guys.
Bye, proceed, proceed.
See you, Billy.
All right, we'll see you.
Do you have?
Hello?
Okay, there.
Oh, go ahead and have.
This morning down there.
Did Mindy have it?
I think Mindy has it.
Oh, there it is.
Uh, where'd you get it? Okay, all right, uh, we didn't contain it outside in the room, but.